Committee of whole meeting for the Gurnee Village Board, July 27th, 2020. And Donna, if you could roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
President.
Present.
And could I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have a couple of things. Well, number one, Mayor Kvark is on vacation, right? So she'll be back next time. And we have two items on the agenda for tonight. The first is Police Chief Brian Smith, update on red light enforcement program. Chief Smith?
All right. Well, good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before you and give you an update on the red light camera program and where we're at here in Gurnee. As we, we're currently in negotiations with Redflex on whether there will be an extension or we'll continue with the program. And hopefully, we'll be coming back to you in the future with that decision. But before we did that, we wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on the current program and review where we're at after all these years. And so, back in June of 2009, we signed our first contract with Redflex for the installation of cameras at four intersections. Those first four intersections were 132 and Hunt Club, 132 and Dilly's, 132 and 21, and 41 and Delaney Road. We've since added four additional approaches at Washington and Hunt Club, both east and westbound, and Washington and 21, both eastbound and westbound. And those were added, what was four years, what, three years later, and then in 2018. So at the time of the program, we had a couple of goals. And so those goals were to reduce the number of crashes that we have, that we'd experienced throughout the community, reduce the number and severity of the injuries in those crashes, increase compliance with red lights, run a program with integrity and transparency, and provide good customer service to those that needed, needed us to do so. And so this, what you'll see here is a graph, and this will, this is our village-wide crashes. So the first three years prior to the establishment of the red light camera program, you'll see that we averaged about 1,480 crashes a year throughout the community. In the years following that, 2009 to 2018, when we, when we use data for this program, we only use the data that's available from the Lake County Department of Transportation. And so their most up-to-date or current numbers are 2018. And so from 2009 to 2018, we've, we've averaged 982 crashes a year. So as you can see, there's been a significant decrease in the number of crashes village-wide since we've implemented the red light camera program. We'll get into the, the intersections of each of the, where the cameras are located, and we'll talk a little bit about the, the before and after of those. But overall, crashes have dropped at 132 and 21, 132 and Hunt Club, 132 and Dilly's, and Washington and Route 21, since we've added the red light cameras. 132 and Hunt Club, we saw a significant reduction in, in crashes and the turning crashes. It's important to note that there's a couple of intersections here that saw some significant traffic safety improvements. Now, these numbers are prior to the intersection improvements at 132 and Hunt Club, but what the data showed was the crashes that we were still seeing at that intersection were coming from Hunt Club onto 132. And the, the cameras are on 132, not Hunt Club. And so that intersection did recently undergo a traffic improvement plan that added dual turn lanes, protected dual turn lanes. And so we don't have data for that yet. The camera there is not online. But we have a similar issue there at 41 and Delaney. There was a, an improvement to that intersection based on some, some traffic data studies and red light camera information. And that is now, if you go back, if you recall back about four years ago, that was not a protected turn. That is now a protected turn from 41 on to, onto Delaney. But, but again, the, the bar graph just kind of goes through some of the crashes, injuries, turning, and rear end, rear end collisions. There's, tends to be something that we're asked about often with, in regards to red light cameras. And you'll see at both of these intersections, there was a reduction across the board. As I mentioned earlier, 41 underwent an improvement in 2015. It wasn't completed until February of 2017, so we, we don't have a whole lot of data available for that post-safety improvement. But with the protected left lane, it certainly reduced the turning-related crashes. And again, you'll see that 41 and Delaney, there's a, there's an increase in the total number of crashes and, and across the board. And so basically, what we saw there was an exchange of information, and IDOT coming back and saying we needed to make improvements to that intersection.
Chief, can we ask you a question now, or should we wait till the end?
I'm open for questions now.
So just the prior page, because that one struck me when I read it at home. So the 41 and Delaney with the increase, so you, so that occurred relatively recently if IDOT suggested more enhancements?
No, so that was in 2015 that they began the improvement. It didn't, it wasn't completed until February of 2017. So there, it was almost a two-year project. And so the, the improvement, it was opened back up in the winter of 2017.
So since the timeframe on that graph is '06 to 2018?
Correct.
If you did a snapshot of it since the improvements were done?
So I have just a little bit of data. I could provide that to you.
Does that, does it take, is that the one chart that's outside of our goal, correct?
It is, yes. But this was to show that overall, there was an increase in crashes, and then the, the intersection was, IDOT came in and improved the intersection, mostly created a, a turn on red only. I can provide you, I don't have that data now. I can provide you the data that, post-accident reconstruction. I can tell you that the, the crashes are down there, but in the overall picture, because we're looking at a, well, eight, nine-year window, overall, the cra, there's an increase there.
I would think current information, it would be good to know if it's validating your hypothesis, right?
Sure.
Because I think our goal is to see a decrease in the second far each time.
Sure, yes. Right, but I, we, I didn't want to come in front of you today and only provide the, the data that showed that, when the, the full picture is, is different.
Okay.
Washington and Hunt Club, again, these were added, westbound Washington was added in 2018. And so again, there's some, there's a lapse in the data that's available for the, for this full intersection. But one thing to note is at Washington and Hunt Club, a majority of the crashes are from Hunt Club onto Washington and not from Washington onto Hunt Club. And this intersection is scheduled for a, an improvement plan next year, I believe it's next year. And so IDOT, or LICDOT will be coming in and, and making improvements to this intersection as well, based on some of the data for the crashes that have occurred there. A majority of them are turning. And as I've mentioned, not just the majority of the crashes, but a majority of the injury, injures, injuries in crashes are from Hunt Club onto Washington.
Going westbound?
Uh, no, Hunt Club going both south and north. Hunt Club onto Washington. So they're, they're on Hunt Club, they're turning onto Washington.
But going west or going east?
On Hunt Club, they're going north and south.
Oh, I thought you said...
Hunt Club runs north-south there.
Yeah, but the accidents are going from Hunt Club onto Washington?
Onto Washington, correct.
So are they turning?
Uh, yes, majority are going south, turning east.
They're going, turning east?
Correct. Yeah, south on Hunt Club to turn east onto Washington.
Okay.
Steve Ross, Ross, did you have a question?
Chief, one other question?
Sure.
Before you leave the charts, because I looked ahead and I don't think my question is better suited into the future. So, I'm just looking, because someone said that maybe Dave Zeigler could help with this, but how many photo violations are issued as a percentage of the traffic counts at any particular intersection?
Yeah, you know, I don't have that data available tonight. I can check through the system to see if that data is available. I would think that it is, but that would be something that, that I would have to get back to you on. I have data available for the total number of citations and the total number of approvals, but not how that compares to the overall traffic volume. I don't have that with me today.
I didn't understand your question.
Let me ask. So I guess the assumption out there is that we're, we're using, you know, we're fining everybody, we're, we have fines for red light cameras as a revenue source, right? That's always a theory. But I think if we found out that we actually have a very small percentage of violations as a total mass of cars going through that intersection, that would possibly show that it's a very small percentage.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thanks. No further questions.
Thank you. Are you okay with me emailing that to the board?
Absolutely.
Again, one of the other, one of the other goals of the program is, is to reduce, or as, as we mentioned, reduce the overall crashes. And while I can't present you a percentage of the reduction based on traffic, I can tell you that the overall number of crashes in the village have dropped since we've implemented the red light enforcement program. Again, number two is to reduce the number and severity. And this chart, it, it says up here, combined red light intersections, all injuries. We're going to get to another chart here that's going to show you the total number of injuries. So these are the injuries that are related to crashes that have occurred in the intersections just, that are part of the red light camera program. And so the, you can see that it's gone down slightly since 2006, so we've gone down from 79.7 to 72 in some, I think it's a point two or something along those lines. But you can see how that, that varies throughout the years. And, and again, the increase in 2013 to 2014 would be the addition of other intersections that came online that were now being incorporated in this, in this chart, whereas prior to that, it was four intersections. We added some intersections, and so you'll see the, the increase there. So half the red light intersections have seen a drop in the injuries. What injuries we do have there in those intersections, a majority of them are, are minor in nature that, that end up having a visit with the paramedics, but not a transport. So we categorize injuries in different classifications. Class A injury requires a transportation. A majority of these are related to airbag deployment or some whiplash, and they choose not to be transported. So again, the third goal was to increase compliance with respect to red lights. And as I, as I pull up this next graph here, what you'll see is the number of total notices that we received in a fiscal year for, for the red light camera program. And so when we first started, that first fiscal year, we had over 15,000 violations that came into the department. The next chart I'm going to get to is going to show you our approvals on those, but you'll see that historically, we've seen a decline after the, after the cameras have been in place for a year, year and a half. Then we add another camera, we see an increase, we see a decline, and a slight increase, and followed by another decline. And so the increase is related to the additional approaches and the additional cameras that are, that are seeing violations. But as we get to this next chart, you'll see that historically, our, our approval rate has remained pretty consistent. With the exception of the first two years, our approval rate is about 50%. And so to, to kind of explain that to you, so the, the vendor in this case sends us the violation that's based on the, the digital data, the scientific piece that shows that it's a violation. The, the goal that we have for our program is officers will only approve violations that they would write on the street. And so you, you'll get a violation that a computer program or a camera can make the determination that it's a violation, but an officer would not write that violation out on the street. And that's where we get the 50% approval rate. So 50% of the violations that we receive, only 50% are approved. And this is that, that chart I was talking about. Now, this is based on calendar year. And so you'll see that, you know, really the first, first three years, and then we start to see the, the decline in approvals, where we've pretty much remained consistent right around that 50% for the last seven years. And again, I tried to explain that. Does that make sense? Does everybody have a grasp on what I mean by that?
Yep.
So the number of notices that have been printed annually have continued to drop, while the number of violations approved has remained consistent. This to us would indicate increased motor compliance with the red light cameras. We've seen, again, we're seeing a reduction in the number of violations that come to us, and in turn, we're seeing a reduction in the number of violations that are being approved, even though our approval, our approval rate remains pretty consistent.
Can I just, do you have a, a lot of people that come in and fight them? I mean, on the violations?
So we, we have a, so there's, it's a, a multi-pronged process. You can request a hearing in person, or you can request a, a hearing and not be present. And so those vary from month, from week to week. We don't have that many that are contested. I, I don't have numbers that I could provide you, but it's, you know, we'll call it about a half, a dozen, maybe, a week. And a majority of the people that are contesting the violation are really coming in twofold. They don't have access to internet to be able to watch the video that's provided to them, or they're asking for a reduction in the fee. And so, again, most of the violations, because we're, we're only approving violations that are, are pretty legit violations, so the ones that, we, you know, we don't see violations where somebody comes in, contests it, and wins because it wasn't a violation. There's usually some other explanation in, in place there.
Okay. Lot of parents coming in.
Uh, no, most of them are, I, I would call elderly folks that, or those that don't necessarily understand. They get a, they get a violation in the mail, and it's a picture. And so it's two pictures of the violation they get. One is a picture of their license plate before the stop line, and the second picture is of their license plate past the stop line. And they, and, and included is a login where you go watch the video. And the video shows you the entire process. Oftentimes, there's some confusion in looking at the pictures, and they say, well, I was stopped. You know, and up in the data is their speed, their, and the time past red in which they entered the intersection. And so I think most of the times, it's, it's confusion. So that's one of the things that, that we're asking for in the new contract with Redflex is a, is a kiosk station that is dedicated to the program where they, they can, people can come in and watch their violation in the station, those that don't have access to it at home. And so that's, that's, that's something we're looking at.
I have a question.
Yes.
If, if they say they can't afford it, do you lower the fee, or do you just maintain it?
So there, there is no process in place to lower the fee. It's, it's a strict liability violation, and so the hundred dollars, it's either a hundred dollars or, or it's, it's not liable. And so go, so again, increasing compliance, I, I would just, I would, you know, ask you and use myself as an example as to how my behavior, my driving behavior has changed with the advent of red light cameras. I know that a lot of people that I know, my, my family, they have changed how they approach and, and proceed through intersections just based on red light camera programs being out there and not always knowing where they're at. And so, you know, use a little bit of personal reflection, but also note that the notices have continued to drop to, to, to believe that we have had an impact on red light enforcement. Integrity and transparency, as, as I've talked a little bit about, we have, our program is maintained by patrol officers that are assigned to work and patrol. They go through a training process. They're asked to dedicate some time during each shift to watch violations and approve them. And again, we'll go back to that, approval rate's about 50%. And the standard for them is, would you write this on the street? And, and so that's, that's how we operate our program. If there is a municipal vehicle, a state vehicle, a county vehicle, those get flagged for supervisor review, and that process is handled at supervisor, supervisors' level and above. And there are some exceptions written into the state law for an emergency vehicle, but again, we, we, we hold all of the vehicles that we see that are municipal related to the same standard. And so there's a dual process there. And so if it's a Gurnee vehicle, what we do is either myself or the deputy chief, we forward that video onto one of the department heads, and, and we ask the department head to, is it justified? If it's not justified, can you provide us the name of the operator? And then that violation gets approved. And we, we add the violator's name and information in there as opposed to the Village of Gurnee. In the police department, we have a very similar process. It comes to the deputy chief's office. He watches the violation. He makes a determination whether or not there was a violation there. And then he goes through a process to find out who was driving the vehicle on that date and time. And that violation then gets sent to that officer's supervisor. And that supervisor is then asked, was this justified, based on what was going on, what was the activity for the night, what was the response to the call, et cetera? If it is not justified, it comes back to us. We add that officer's information into the violation, and we process the violation, and it moves forward with the violation being sent to the officer's house. Now, on top of that, we also move through a, a process internally for policy violations for operating of a motor vehicle. And so we have a process is, is in place for that as well. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, I'm here to tell you that we, we have officers that have violated red light cameras. We've off, we've had officers that have received citations in the mail. We've had officers that have gotten letters of reprimand. We've had officers that unfortunately have been suspended. And so we take our program very seriously. For outside agencies, you know, we have cameras that are on the major hub to the Lake County Jail. And we also have cameras that are at the, we'll call it a major turnaround spot coming off of I-94 for State Patrol and State Plows, tollway plows. And so we forward those violations to those agencies, and we ask them to review the violation and make a determination as to whether or not it was exempt under the state statute. So that's how we handle that program. Is there any questions on that? I know I kind of moved around a little bit as to how we handle violations for, I guess, call it government vehicles. All right. And then we maintain copies of all of those. So we have a file available at the police state, police department of every violation that is a government vehicle since our program has started, and what the outcome of that was.
This doesn't have anything to do with the officers, but for funeral processions?
Yeah.
Have, have you had any issues with that? Because I know when you're leading a procession, we're always putting stickers where they're supposed to be seen, but has it ever been an issue?
Most of those violations are caught at the vendor. So the vendor has guidelines that we provide them to not send us violations, and that would be one of those. There have been occasions over the years where something has slipped through to us, but those, those are not approved. Those would be an exception under the state statute, as long as it was a controlled procession. And the last, the last of, of our goals here is to provide good, good customer service. As explained earlier, we have a process in place that puts patrol officers behind the decision-making, violation versus no violation. We have a traffic safety technician who oversees the program and, and handles the day-to-day operations, our contact with our vendor, which is Redflex, handles the phone calls with potential violators, handles the mailing process. He also runs the administrative hearings with our administrative hearing officer. And so like everything that we do, we'd like to believe that customer service is a priority. Again, our, our goal is service, but to also impact the driving habits of people that are not just traveling through Gurnee, but are driving generally elsewhere. As I've mentioned, I, I feel like cameras have had an impact on me. And so while we may have seen a decline of crashes and in Gurnee, our hope would be that other communities are also seeing a decline because it's changing behavior and making the roads more safe. And so with that, I know we've answered some questions, but be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Start down here.
I just have one question about a technicality. Is that considered a moving violation for... Is that considered a moving violation for insurance or what have you?
It is not.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, so, Mr. Thorstensen?
You're saying that these, this data, this presentation is because we're coming up on a contract renewal?
Correct.
Do you have information on the new contract in terms of fees and anything like that yet?
We don't have a final, a final version. We've, we've been negotiating since June.
Hmm, okay.
And so we're currently in a one-month extension. We have a process in the current contract that expired that allows for a one-month extension indefinitely until we either cancel the program or move forward with a new contract. And so we're getting ready to start our second one-month extension. And we are at our third meeting for negotiations.
And so when you bring that forward, will it have any other, like you guys usually do, you know, some type of a comparison to other types of services and fee structure and all of that?
Yes. So when we bring that forward, we'll bring forward the, what the agreed, what the agreement was. We'll bring data that shows you what it was in the last three contracts where we're currently at. We have what is considered a legacy program here in Gurnee. We are Redflex's largest community in Illinois and, and we've been with them, you know, for almost 20 years now. And so we can show you the transition of the technology. We can show you the transition of the fees. I think it was important for those that remember, when we started this program and we started the meeting on this in the end of 2006, beginning of 2007, I was a patrolman, Pat was assistant at the time, we were part of the startup committee. And, and the goal at that time was to not only affect the five things that we've talked about today, but to also have a program that could withstand any issues that may come forward. And so we made a decision at that time to go based on a monthly maintenance contract cost for each intersection and to not, to not agree to a cost per citation, a cost per touch, because there, we wanted to make sure there was no incentive to approve a violation on our end and that there was no incentive on their end to send us a violation. And so we felt it was extremely important back then to pay a monthly fee irregardless of the number of violations, and we continue to believe that. And, and so that would be what we'll hopefully bring forward to you in the coming month.
Thank you. I would just ask, and I guess this would go in, I have not noticed within emails and that, have the complaints about red light, red light cameras, are they still out there about not ever wanting to come into our community or shop here again or any of that?
The complaints that we get through the general website comments aren't few and far between at this point. I'm not sure directly to you guys. I know we get questions on, on occasion on just the violation or one was lost in the mail or the way to pay, but I'm taking my sales tax dollars someplace else that we, like I said, hardly receive those comments.
Yeah, I don't know whether we don't get those anymore or see those anymore, but I haven't noticed them as, you know, if I could draw a line, what goes like?
Yeah, we don't, we, we don't generally get open-ended complaints like that. We, you know, obviously when somebody gets a violation and they're a bit upset and they contact us, you know, there is, there's some conversation about that where you may have somebody that expresses some displeasure. But generally, we, we don't see those complaints anymore.
I mean, it's good. I'm not liking it. I'm happy to hear that.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
I do have just one other one from a PR standpoint. I learned a lot about the red light cameras when I went to Citizen Police Academy.
Yes.
Really informative. And actually, it changed my behavior on how I go through them. I used to be one of those who would never turn red on red when there was a red light camera. Now I know. But my question is more about a PR. Since the vendors have been in the news for such a long time, has Redflex been out of the news? In other words, the issue, I don't think it's an issue with Gurnee. I love our town. That's why, part of why I'm here. So I don't think it's an issue at all of bribery and doing all this other stuff. I just want to make sure that they're not one of the names that were ever listed on any of the news that reports.
So it's been a number of years, but they were the original vendor for the city of Chicago. And there was some fallout involved in that process down there. But in today's news, no. Redflex, to the best of my knowledge, has not been. There are some other companies that are dealing with some issues again in Cook County. And then just to, you know, I mentioned it during the budget process, there are still three bills that are in subcommittee at the legislative level to ban red light camera programs. Two of those ban red light cameras for any non-home rule community, which wouldn't apply to us. And the third one is an outright statewide ban on all programs. But those, those were brought forward last year. They didn't make them out of, they didn't make it out of subcommittee. And they were brought forward again this year. I think COVID has kind of, you know, paused that entire legislative process. And so there are still bills out there to ban these. But to speak directly to your question, we've never had an issue with Redflex as far as something like that would go, but they were involved in something in the city of Chicago back in the 2000s.
I assumed not, and I really hated to pose the question at all, but I figure if anyone asks me.
Sure.
It's worthwhile knowing.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, thank you for asking.
Are there other intersections that are under consideration or have been under consideration to add to this program?
So currently, no. You know, our, currently our, our hope would be that 132 and Hung Club would come back online at some point. I don't have any information available at this time to be able to provide to you on whether or not that's even a possibility or whether it's a process that will start all over again since they have revamped that intersection. But it is possible we'll lose that intersection. But no, there aren't any other intersections that we're currently looking at.
And there aren't any intersections that would be, are being examined to be withdrawn from the program?
Uh, no, not currently.
Thank you, Chief Smith, for all the information. That's helpful.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll get those responses to the questions that I was unable to answer. I'll get those off tomorrow.
Okay, up next, Brett or Nick, who's leading the show? Nick.
So this will be an update on the Knolls Water Road Wallet Water Tower and Pressure Zone Number Five.
That's quick.
Yeah, so Tom Rigwood asked me to give a brief update on the Knolls Road Water Tower and Pressure Zone Five improvements. So I'll pretty much be giving you just an overview of how construction went these past two years. By the way, can everybody hear me all right? Construction, an overview on the past two years of construction. Brett will come in and talk about kind of what we previously had for that area out there and then how these improvements affected the residents on the west side of town. And then Brian will give a quick update on the finance of where we're at with this project. First of all, I want to give a shout out to the Village of Gurnee staff. I've worked with all the departments for this job. And so it was a great collective effort to get this project completed. And that's from Public Works Engineering Building Department, IS, Finance and Admin. So they've, we're all very helpful in completing this job or almost completing this job. We're right, we're really close. So moving on to the construction portion, so we installed three facilities. One, two million gallon Spheroid water tower off of, off of Rollins at the dead end of Knolls Road. A pump station located at the Bittersweet Golf Course, and then two PRVs or pressure reducing systems to separate the two zones. Later Brett will show a relationship to where all these facilities are located. So first up is the tower. And so what you have to do is dig a really big hole. And so that began in 2019, January. As you can, as you can see, there's some snow on the ground. So that's a 70-foot diameter hole, 14 feet deep. And so it's quite a feat. It's a, I've never been on a job such as big as this, so it was very interesting to not only, you know, make sure the contractor's doing what they're supposed to do, but also learn some things as, as time went on. And so I also to mention, since this was a fairly large job and is one of my first big projects to cut my teeth on, we also had two other consultants to use as, I'll call it helpers. We had Strand Associates, they designed the project, and they were there to help us with some technical questions if we had them. And then we also had Clark Deets. They were mostly there for the physical presence to be on site, mostly helping with the water tower, just because none of our staff has ever built a water tower of this size. So moving on from digging a hole, next was framing and pouring the foundation. So they hauled in a bunch of rebar, the framers came out, they tied in all the rebar. Next up was to pour the concrete. Before you could pour the concrete, certain criteria needed to be met. And since it was in the wintertime, one of the criteria was the rebar itself had to be 35 degrees and above. They started in January, they probably finished at the very beginning of February, and we didn't get to pour until March 22nd. So it took almost two months for us to get the right conditions to actually pour. And so what the contractor did to help speed up the process, they brought in huge tarps and they covered this entire area, the bottom right-hand picture, full of tarps, and, and brought in several, probably five or six heaters, propane heaters, and they would keep these heaters on throughout the night, just trying to keep that area warm. And so there was probably five or six cancellations for the concrete pour just because 5:00 in the morning, they called me up, Nick, we got to cancel again. So they did that, you know, several times before they were able to get the temperature where they needed to be. Moving on from this, they poured roughly 400 cubic yards of concrete, which is roughly the equivalent of 60 concrete trucks. So it was an all-day event. They first, the first day they poured, the foundation footing, which is the bottom left-hand corner here, if you can imagine cutting a donut longitudinally in half, that's kind of what the foundation footing looked like. And then on top of that, they made a ring wall to bring the tower up to grade. And so the way they, way where they pour the concrete is with a pumping truck. You can kind of see the arm in the middle picture there. Now that I realize it looks pretty cluttered, so I apologize for how many photos are up there. But I wanted to show you guys the neat stuff that happened during this project. So moving on from there, next was backfilling and installing the internal piping. So this is where the top right photo shows a pipe that's going back to our system. And then the bottom two photos is the, after they were done backfilling and installing the pipe up to grade. And so they had installed pipe and they have installed, there was like a bunch of conduit also needed to be installed. So it was, and the part about this is if you didn't get the conduit right here, if we didn't, like there was one conduit that was missed. Luckily, it wasn't, it was just a spare conduit, but it was kind of crucial aspect of the job, not realizing it just because it's new. You know, once that concrete's in, there's no going back and putting more conduit in. So luckily enough, everything was good and only one spare conduit was missed. Moving on from that, it was time to erect the tower. And so once the foundation floor was poured, which is also an interesting tidbit, there were several, several people that came on the job site that said, man, this is nice to have a concrete floor and a water tower. The two other towers in town have dirt floors. So that was kind of a unique aspect of the job that you won't think about coming in new because like, oh, it makes sense to have a concrete floor. It's not, not always the case in some of the towers.
You have to heat it up?
The, and we hit, so there's an internal structure that, that's going to be heated, but the entire tower itself does not, is not heated.
But in the lower?
Yeah, in a little room, eight by 10 room is heated with all the SCADA equipment and some valving. Something I also forgot to mention is probably pretty important, there was two contractors that were taking place for this job. The first contractor was Chicago Bridge and Iron. They were responsible for making the tower. The other contractor was Boulder Construction, and they were responsible for making the pump station and installing the two PRVs. So right now, we're on Chicago Bridge and Iron's project. And so at this portion of the job, they started to bring in material and start assembling the tower on site. And so they would make small sections on the ground, and then they would have a lift day. And so they would bring in a really large crane to start lifting. So the first was obviously the lower bell. Once that was lifted into place and welded together, they moved on to the shaft. And so they brought a very large yellow crane in, and I believe two days, they were able to get these segments built all the way up to the bottom of the tank. On the second day, they erected a, it's called a boom crane, and that's what you can see in the bottom right-hand corner. That crane is built into the shaft and it actually builds itself from, with, basically within itself. So it was kind of neat seeing that aspect of it. It's something, you know, you don't even think about until it's, until they do it. It makes a lot of sense. And so what they did was they basically, in these two pictures on the right, they're lifting, it's called leaf, and it's the bottom portion of the tank. And basically, they would lift it into place and tie it off to the actual boom crane, which makes sense, until they were able to weld and get the, I guess, mid-bowl to upper bowl installed. And so once that was completed, we had Dixon Engineering as well to do all the onsite weld inspections and paint inspections. So basically, once, the picture on the left is pretty much the finishing of using the boom crane. Once they got into about top of the bowl, they brought that large yellow crane in again, disassembled the boom crane, and then added the internal piping where the water would go into the tank, and then finished off the, the top of the tank with that yellow crane. Next, once the welds were completed for the entire tower was the painting. We used a three-coat system. The first coat was a zinc primer, and pretty much that was applied to any of the weld joints, pretty much anywhere that looked brown, that's indication of oxidation, oxidation of the steel. And so they retouched up the joints and any places that was discolored. Once that was completed, they moved on to the two epoxy coat paints application, and this paint is used for really heavy-duty stuff, marine, commercial marina-type applications just to protect the steel from corroding and prolonging, prolonging its longevity. The photo on the right is showing the containment for the painting application. It was required to have containment, but the way the contractor was applying- It was required to have containment, but the way the contractor was applying the paint was by rolling it instead of spraying. So the containment, they installed the containment, just because we weren't sure how the conditions were going to be out there. Turns out, it's extremely windy on the west side of town, believe it or not. And so they could barely, they weren't, when it was over 10 miles per hour and, or 15 miles per hour in wind gust, they weren't able to go up just because it was unsafe conditions. And so that's pretty much the same cutoff for the containment. And the containment is just like a big shower curtain that went up and down. You can probably barely, barely see it at the bottom of the tower, the black tarp that just went all the way up. It was kind of unique driving by, if you saw it when it was up, just like, that's really odd. So that began 2019, let's say, August painting. They didn't finish until April 2020, so this past year. Unfortunately, this last October, we had winter come really, really soon. I believe October 31st, it snowed. So they had to cancel operations. And this is what it looks like today. I chose this picture because you can see at the bottom of the tower, there's a lighter coat of blue. And so that just indicating the two coats of paint that they applied. The final coat is, it's called a purple haze. It doesn't look purple, it's a nice deep blue, looks very, very pretty in my opinion. So it was a good color selection. Moving on to the pump station. So this is located at the Bittersweet Golf Course between the clubhouse and maintenance building. This is where our secondary location from CLC Jawa is located, so our secondary supply line. And this is just a front and back view of the very gorgeous building that was built. So some of the internal components, we have our valving and piping, we have a low-flow and high-flow pump. The intent of this system is post, you know, majority of the time, you want Jawa providing adequate pressure to our system. There's going to be a rare occasion, hopefully, it's going to be a rare occasion, we don't want them turning on most of the time, where we'll need to have the low-flow, flow, flow pump implemented or the high-flow, in case Jawa's not providing adequate pressure to our facilities. So that's the reasoning for the low-flow and high-flow pump. But on the very, just to kind of give you an idea, the water comes in on the right side, the large pipe that's going straight up, and then it comes in, either it goes through the pumps, or it goes straight out to the system over here, which is not shown. So other interesting items in this building is the SCADA rooms. This is kind of the brains of the new Zone 5, which Brett will go into a little bit more. This is where all the facilities communicate back to, and this is where this facility communicates back to the main SCADA at Public Works. Also there is a very large generator, just in case, natural gas generator, just in case power were to go down and we need to supply enough power to power the two pumps. And then, of course, we have our sampling sink where, and sampling equipment, little blue thing on the wall is a chlorine residual indicator, indicating how much chlorine residual we get from Jawa. And so that's, that's daily, that's logged daily. Moving on to the PRVs, which we like to call them, they're technically called a pressure-reducing system. We call it pressure-reducing, we just call it a PRV, just a nice acronym, instead of calling it PRS, PRV's easier to say. But there is a pressure-reducing valve in the internal components of this system. These are implemented at Foxworth and Foxworth just west of Hunt Club Road, and then on Almond Road, just north of the school there. And pretty much, these are to separate the two zones. And the main intent of a pressure zone, or PRV is to, basically control the pressures on the upstream and downstream. And so if we didn't have these and we just allowed Zone 5 to fill up and pressurize, we would over-pressurize anything downstream. And so our cutoff for the new zone is pretty much Hunt Club Road, everything west, and then everything south of Grand, and then everything north of Washington. So if you can imagine a big square. And so these are able to keep Zone 5 pressurized, as well as feed into Zone 3, making sure they have adequate pressure as well. So we installed two of these, these are very large facilities. We needed another crane to put these down in the ground. Before we could set them, we needed to pour a concrete pad, because these are actually, they can be buoyant if there's enough groundwater. So we had to anchor the already three, I think it was, it was, I want to say like 3,000 pounds, but already very heavy facility, and anchor it down to a foot and a half thick pad, just so if there was a case that we had groundwater, it wouldn't push up and heave the structure. So that was an interesting thing to learn as well. So these would tie into the main water system at, at the point that I mentioned earlier. And so this is the location of the Almond Road PRV looking south towards the school, and this is the location on Foxworth looking back towards Hunt Club. This is just after we installed, and this is, I'll call it today, fully restored. We plan on providing, when budget available, possibly providing some shielding to kind of remove, I guess, I'll say shield, these facilities coming out of the ground. They aren't too appealing to the eye, but to me now, when I drive past them, I just, they're just background, I don't ever see it again. But when we have budget available, we'll, we'll look into getting some, maybe bushes to put around here to kind of pretty it up. Some future considerations, before I get into that, I just want to say, the new pressure zone is currently running and functioning. The tower's being filled, it was being filled today, hopefully it'll be filled by tomorrow, so that can be put into service soon here. Both contracts are nearly done and should be finishing up at the end of August. So this project hopefully can close out by then. All that remains for both are just some punchless items and then some contract documents that still need to be submitted. Now going into the future considerations, something that lacked in this project itself was looking at how these facilities communicate to each other, particularly the Foxworth location. It was built, believe it or not, that location is like a bolt, like a sunken-in area, so it's essentially in a bowl. And the way we have it communicating right now is supposed to be point-to-point antenna. It's not going to work because there's just too much stuff in the way. So we had to look into, we're working right now with a consultant to work into alternative ways to provide communication to that facility. Right now, we're, we're communicating it via our secondary communication, which is cellular communication. And the goal for each of the sites is to provide a secondary backup communication, just in case of a, let's say, thunderstorm or tornado wipes out the antennas, these facilities still need to be operating. So right now, we're working with a consultant to look into that. The second thing to consider possibly is looking into SCADA optimization. I know one was done in the 1990s. Since then, I, you know, we've implemented a ton of infrastructure that I think would be a good idea to possibly get, look at as a whole and see how we can best utilize our facilities and making sure we're running them efficiently. So with that, I'll leave you with one tidbit. The picture on the right is a door to a water tower. You may be thinking, "Well, that's simple." The CB and I, Chicago Bridge and Iron, has never installed a door on a water tower before. So this is kind of a unique thing for them. And then the 2 million gallon Spheroid Tower, there is roughly, I think there's only three in the nation that have been built. And so I think that's a pretty unique thing that Gurney has now, that we have a 2 million gallon water tower. So with that, I'll hand it over to Brett, who's kind of, who's kind of go over previous conditions and how the system has improved.
So before you leave, Nick, let me just ask, is there, are there any questions from any of the trustees? There being none. Oh, sorry.
I'm always concerned about the safety and protection of our drinking water. How secure are all of these from any kind of?
Intrusion?
Intrusion?
Brett can answer this question, but I know at each, each facility, we have 24/7 cameras. This facility is unique in the fact that we installed a door handle that, it's called alarm lock, and it's keypad entry only, or proxy only, as where some of the other water towers have padlock. So this is, I mean, we're, we're conscious of security aspects of it. As a whole, we were talking with Trustee Hood earlier, that it's fairly safe, and Brett can probably answer that better than I can, in terms of why.
Yes, the new water tower is very secure. That's the exterior door pad going there, and that's the keypad entry. So once you're in to the base of the water tower, all controls and the water pipes themselves are located in another eight-by-ten concrete building within the base of it, with another key door actually entered there. There's the true alarms to give it to both of those doors, then they're all tied back into our SCADA system. And then for the pump station, again, there's a keypad door entry, this vertical alarm system in there that's connected to the police department, there's cameras and all this sort of thing. So these two facilities that are being built there are truly secure, with all kinds of surveillance and proper safety protections.
Thank you.
And the higher the pressure, the better it is.
I have a quick question.
Trustee or Brett?
I just don't know what the inside of a water tower looks like. Where's all the water? Is it up in the upper bulb, and then there's just two big pipes that go up the middle?
Yes, so there's a riser pipe that goes up through the bowl, and this particular system, it basically shoots out mid-bowl, and there's a big tank, the tank's right through here. So there's no water in the shaft per se, only in the pipe that goes up into the tank, and then discharges into the tank and fills this all the way up. So if you can imagine the top of that band, that's like the high-level water, high water level in the tank. Good question.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick, I appreciate that. Brett, you're up.
So just a little bit of information about our water distribution system. We have 190 miles of water main throughout the village, over 2,500 fire hydrants, almost 2,400 water main valves, 11 pressure-reducing valves throughout the now five different pressure zones, four water towers, including the Knolls Road Water Tower, two water pump stations for CLC Jawa water, two emergency backup wells, one 3 million gallon ground reservoir, and one interconnect with the city of Waukegan where we can provide them water, or they can provide us water. These are the original four pressure zones that we have throughout the village. Let me see if this works here. There we go. So the water comes through the Cemetery Road Pump Station, which is located, where are we? Right about here. So all the water would come in through our Cemetery Road Pump Station from CLC Jawa. Some of it would go into the 3 million gallon ground reservoir, and the rest of it would get dispersed throughout Zone 3. Zone 3 maintains pressure through a water tower at Pembroke off of Dilly's Road, and then another water tower in Heather Ridge. Those water towers, as Nick mentioned, all the water is held up in the bulbous part at the top there. When you elevate the water, it provides water pressure for the system. So the water in Zone 3 would come in through here, would fill each of the two water towers, and then it would come through our north side pump station, through a valve, and into Zone 1, and would fill the water tower off of Northwestern here. From Zone 1, there's four PRVs that would feed the water from Zone 1 into Zone 2, off of Delaney, or sorry, off of Lee Avenue, Delaney Road, Granville and Northwestern, and Bay Place. Zone 2 originally had pressure sustained by the old Grand Avenue Water Tower next to Fire Station 1. When that was taken down, these valves were adjusted so that this pressure zone, the old part of town here, old Grand Avenue, pressure's maintained through these pressure valves. Water is also brought from Zone 3 down Copsill Road and feeds Zone 4, which is Providence Village and Providence Oaks and Country Trails. There's another feed into Zone 2, and then also from Zone 4 into Zone 2 as well. So all of the reasons that we have these four different pressure zones is due to different ground elevations throughout the system. You know, if we tried to put Zone 2 on the same pressure as Zone 3, we'd have all kinds of problems, just because of the elevation change. The way that these towers, Dilly's and Pembroke, or sorry, Pembroke and Heather Ridge Towers are controlled, is that when the low fill set point is reached, a pump kicks on at Cemetery Road, it brings water out of the reservoir, pushes it into the system, and fills up each of those two water towers. When the water towers are full, the pump shuts off, and they start draining back down into the system. And then that cycle repeats itself over and over again. The Tower 4, Northwestern Tower up here, again, that gets fed from Zone 3 into Zone 1 through a PRV here. So when that water tower drains down and hits the low-level point, the PRV up here opens up, fills it back up, and when it's full, it closes and it drains back down. So all of this in an effort basically to provide fresh water throughout the system, and also in a pressure-controlled environment, so that everybody basically has good pressure throughout the system. As you can see, Zone 3 is the largest pressure zone, and that kind of created a couple issues. The first issue, the first issue is that on the west side of town, we were seeing lower pressures down around 38 or 40 PSI, especially out like by Geneva, that area. And while those pressures are still more than double what the IAPA minimum is of 20, it's less than ideal for customer use, also less than ideal for fire flows from the fire hydrants. And then also, given the size of that pressure zone, the storage capacity in that zone was relatively small. Only 1 million gallons between both Towers 2 and 3, which is Pembroke and Dilly's, or sorry, Pembroke and Heather Ridge. So the, we did a few studies through, I think the first one was in 96, another one in 2002. And those studies were found that basically both of those problems could be solved by creation of a new water pressure zone. And this right here is essentially what the new water pressure zone is. As Nick mentioned, it's basically everything west of Hunt Club, north of Washington, and south of Grand Avenue. There's a few exceptions, Woodland School is not in it, and a few of the outer restaurants and things like that, like the Wendy's and TGI Fridays are not in there as well. To create the pressure zone, we had to close off three system valves, mainline valves one and two here, a third one over here by Data and Hunt Club. We installed, we built the Almond Road Pump Station right here, the Knolls Road Water Tower up here, and then the Foxworth PRV and the Almond PRV here. And by closing those main valves here and installing this pressure, pressure-reducing valves here, we basically created that new pressure zone. valves here, we basically created that new pressure zone. So this is a blown-up view of that new Pressure Zone 5. The Almond Road Pump Station, it's an opportunity for us to have a secondary source of water from CLC Jawa. It provides redundancy throughout the system. If our main feed goes down, we are able to backfeed the entire village through the Almond Road Pump Station, through these PRVs into the remaining zones so the village maintains water supply. The water is received here from CLC Jawa and then pushed out through our water mains to fill the tower up here. Once the tower is full, it will start draining back down and the Foxworth PRV and the Almond PRV are designed in a way that they will constantly be feeding a limited supply of water out of this pressure zone into Zone 3, just so we can get some turnover in this 2 million gallon tank. So we needed about 70 PSI coming from the Almond Road Pump Station so we could fill that water tower to capacity. Basically, the IEP A regulations state that to get it online, you have to chlorinate it and then fill it to the overflow point, which is the absolute capacity that you can get to, and then let it sit and do some sampling afterwards. So we needed approximately 70 PSI to get to that overflow point. July 6, we began the disinfection procedure. They chlorinated the tank and we began to fill it up. Fortunately, when we began to fill it, we had two water main breaks on July 8, one on Ravinia Drive, quite a large one that required some asphalt restoration, and then another one on Route 45. We made those repairs, we resumed filling, and then again on July 14, we had two more water main breaks on Old Walnut near Prescott and then another one on Gema Court. So after these four water main breaks, we decided to take a step back and reexamine our approach to filling this tower. The concern being is that if you are pushing water into the tower and you get a couple large main breaks that happened at the exact same time or one massive main break, we wanted to avoid any kind of back siphonage situation from the tower out into the distribution system. So we did. So we took a step back. We tried a different approach where instead of trying to fill the tower immediately, we isolated the tower from the system by turning off the valves to it and then we slowly brought up the pressure in that zone about 1 to 1 and 1/2 PSI every day. We'd bring it up 1 to 1 and 1/2 and let it sit to the next morning. And if everything held, we would repeat the process. And we were pretty successful in that approach. We had one water main break on July 23 after it had been held in about 69, 70 for roughly 18 hours. We made the repair to that. We re-pressurized the zone to 69 or 70 and it maintained since. Confident that it could hold that pressure now for a matter of days at least. We decided to resume filling this morning. We put about five feet of water, five additional feet of water into the tower today and then we anticipate being able to top it off tomorrow. Once we get it to the overflow point, it has to sit for 24 hours, then we can take two samples 24 hours apart and if those pass, we can put that water tower online into service. So right now, the water tower is isolated as we're filling it, but even still, the customers in Zone 5 are still seeing increased pressures. Throughout that pressure zone, they're seeing about 15 to 20 PSI increase over what they did have previously, which is pretty noticeable, pretty considerable. Like Nick said, he had, he had one call that was happy about it. My staff has been on some calls out in the area as well where they've received a vote of approval with the increase of pressure. And again, the additional pressure will also increase, will help with fire flow. As I mentioned, Knowles Road is a 2 million gallon tank, which would bring our total storage capacity within the village up to 8 million gallons. Our average daily demand is about 3 and 1/2 million gallons. So that should give us around two days, a little over two days of storage capacity if Jawa has to go down for repairs or an emergency situation. And then that can be lengthened out if we turn on our wells or open our interconnect with Waukegan. The Almond Road Pump Station, again, it provides a secondary source of water, which offers redundancy. So if we lose Cemetery Road, we can backfeed through Almond Road and vice versa. If we lose the feed for Almond Road, we can push water into Zone 5 still. And then Nick kind of touched on this a little bit. We're looking to basically conduct an optimization of the SCADA system. Throughout the years, changes have been made to the water system and they've always kind of been implemented one piece at a time. You know, for example, when Water Tower 1 came down, things were tweaked so that that system would work the way it was and not when Zone 5 and the tower are brought online, that's kind of its own piece as well. So we're looking to do an overhaul of the SCADA system that will increase the kind of like the cohesiveness of the system as a whole and then improve the data collection that we have throughout the village and the water distribution system. I know that's kind of a lot of information. Are there any questions regarding that aspect of it?
Questions, doesn't seem like...
I think Brian's got one slide.
One more slide. Two questions.
Thank you, Brett.
One more slide you haven't seen.
So real quick, really just wanted to remind the board about how we've paid for, paid for the water tower. Total finance is just over 4.7 million and we're just talking about here the Chicago Bridge and Iron contracts and the Bowler contracts. The other consultant stuff that Nick was talking about, we paid for out of, directly out of the Water and Sewer Capital Fund. Total IEP A loan, low-interest IEP A loan, terms 20 years, expires 5/29/2040. We have entered, or I should say, agreed to the repayment agreement. So we are officially now in the repayment period. Our first payment is due this November. Total payment is 141,0569. We'll make those semi-annually, so two payments a year. Interest rate on the, on the loan is 1.84%. Obviously, we can make, we set it up this intentionally so we can make additional principal payments to bring down not only the term, but the ultimate total interest paid. We did include in the FY '21 budget, 560,000 for that first year debt service. We thought we'd have two payments. First of all, that's where the 310 came in for principal and interest. And we also included an additional 250,000 as an additional interest payment or additional principal payment. When we had set up the loan and talked about it during our multi-year financial forecast, we noted that if we made that additional payment, we would cut the term in half basically. So we'd go from a 20-year to a 10-year. In hindsight, it gave us also flexibility with what, what happened with the COVID-19 crisis and, you know, I don't know if we'll, we'll probably have to wait until later in the year to make a determination on that 250 to see where, to see where that, to see where it shakes out, but we at least have that flexibility now. So it has been budgeted for, have the flexibility. We can cut the term in half if we continue to make that, make that debt service payment. And this setup really gives us flexibility to be able to do that. Total village contribution here, if you recall, during the financial forecast discussion, we talked about targeting the village contribution to offset about a million and a half of the total cost. We'll end up just under that and we did that intentionally when we saw the coronavirus come on. We utilized the IEP A loan for the last few invoices here, knowing that we could pay that additional principal if we had to, but the total village take will be just over a million dollars. So short of the 1.5 we had targeted, but we did that intentionally, given the impact of the coronavirus. And water revenues, which we've seen still trending down 20%, I don't know if that's changed for July yet. I don't know if I've seen those numbers yet, but so gave us flexibility there. Any questions on the financing piece? Or we can start where we began? Finish where we began? Oh, one more?
We set up a whole trail cam and tried our best to do penetration of the tower. Correct. We're... They could have sprayed the tower with either a roller, the two rates, the control channels, the main particles, for the performance. Unfortunately, with Plan A and get the correct alignment of where the logo and, you know,
This is almost as much fun as watching mail and go down. That was amazing.
Thank you very much. I just appreciate, I think it's definitely was a village staff entire effort that happened with you guys at the point. It was, it worked out well. It's, I feel good about what we see and also what it means to the people on the west side and also the rest of us to be able to have a little more reserve, provide some comfort. These times, you never know what's going to go wrong. So having a little more safety involved is a good thing. So thank you very much. It's very informative. That's it? So is there a...
Some.
On favor, say hi. Thanks. Thank you.